I'd like to call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCoslin, please call roll.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzzo.
Present.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a presentation by the Hays Design Group.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Andrew Campanaro. With me is Christie Castanzo. We're going to be talking about the summer projects that were done here at Bethel Park. I'm going to start with talking about the work done in the cafeteria at Neil Armstrong Middle School. The flooring was successfully replaced. The only thing needing to be done is the orange accent tile. That was on back order. That is now in the contractor's possession and will get installed on November 1st. So after that, all of the work in the cafeteria will be completed. Any questions on the work at Neil Armstrong Middle School? All right, seeing none. I'm going to move on and talk about the work at Independence Middle School. So in the building, we are replacing the gymnasium floor, so the wood floor in the gym, and there was an LBT floor directly adjacent to it also within the gym. All of that flooring work has been completed. The only item currently in progress is the HVAC work. That started yesterday. It's going to take about three weeks to complete, and the gym basically at that point will be ready to be turned over to the district for their use. So that'll be late, the late first week of November or early second week, depending on exactly when that turnover happens. Any questions on the work at Independence Middle School? All right. Third on the list is the paving work at the elementary schools. That work has been completed. There is a punch list that we did recently. That work on the punch list has not been finished by the contractor. We're working with them to get that finished. Once that happens, we'll let the district know, and then they can finalize that contract with them. Any questions about the elementary schools? All right. Then we will move on to the water remediation work at the high school, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Christie Castanzo, and she's going to talk to you about that. And I'm going to pass some things out while she starts talking.
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Thank you.
For the water remediation at the high school, the work was awarded and will begin next week with the waterproofing repair and also the backfill in the courtyard. Anticipated completion is the first week of December, weather permitting. Obviously, this work cannot happen if it's raining or there's inclement weather of that kind. Andrew is currently passing out the report. We spoke about this report at the last board meeting, and we promised, and we delivered, that it would be here this week. Just wait one second until everyone has one.
Can you, like, I don't know, put your mouth really close to the microphone like this?
Like this, okay.
That would be appreciated, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So the report that you have in front of you, I just wanted to point out, we're not going to go through this page by page. I think it would be best if you all read this at your own, you know, leisure, and then we can answer any questions that you have after reading it at the next board meeting. I just wanted to flip through it quickly to point a few things out. If you flip to the executive summary, which is the first main document in here, you will note, this is the document that we provided to you at the last meeting. So this is just, again, for your record, so it's all together. It just outlines everything in a very brief way, and also outlines the quotes and the bids that were received. Continuing, we then split the rest of the document up between the interior investigation and the exterior investigation. So the interior work occurs first, and it's broken down into some background information regarding the issues, what the investigation entailed, any test results, which are in the appendix, and then our recommendation. Following that is the exterior investigation, sorry, and it follows the same outline, some context, the investigation itself, and then our recommendations. And then after that, at the end, you will find the appendix, which has some documents that can be referenced, some test results, some drawings from the original construction for reference, as well as some photographs. Does anyone have any questions about the report at this time, generally?
Well, the only question I have is, you said weather permitting. What exactly, I mean, I know what weather is, but I mean, what would cause rain, snow?
Yeah, there would be issues. The waterproofing is the more critical weather-dependent part of that, because certain materials that are being placed cannot get wet or they don't perform well. So obviously, if it's raining or snowing, they would have to hold off on doing that work until it's dry enough for them to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We're going to hand these out separately. Okay. Andrew's going to hand out another document. We're going to move on to the paving replacement at the bus garage. I forgot to take my copy first. Okay. The document that you have in front of you outlines the different, I guess you could call it, phases of work that we have performed or have done for the paving so far. So it's broken into three sections. The first section was, I guess we'd call it, the original scope of work that was done. This was already approved by the board, and most of this work has already been completed, and the fee for that was already approved, and it's partially been invoiced at this point. That includes the Pazer study that was done, some geotechnical work, some survey work, those sorts of things that were done in that portion of work. The next section, which is the bid package with the NPDES permit, this included the stormwater detention system that was required by the municipality, permitting for the NPDES permit, and some creation of documents for the project. So this work was also already approved by the school board. This work has not yet occurred, though. The next section is what we really want to talk about in a little bit more detail. These are additional scope of work items that have not yet been approved. In early August, Mike Smith from our office at the Hays Design Group, Dr. Jan Santi, Nick Fierst, and Scott visited the bus garage to talk about some additional items that may need or want to be done to include those in the asphalt replacement project. So I've listed them all here. I'll just outline them for you. This would include replacing the fencing around the entire bus garage, replacing, and including a motorized gate at the entrance. The existing electrical receptacles that are used to power the warming blankets for the diesel engines, they're in poor condition, so that would be replaced as well. New parking blocks would be installed at each parking stall. New signage at the intersection of Industrial Boulevard and the bus garage, and signage to direct visitors. Along the northwestern and southwestern portions of the site, there is some eroding of the existing hillside that would want to be addressed. It is in poor condition. Our civil engineer has two recommendations for potentially addressing this, and they're outlined here. So one of the options would be sloping the area so that the erosion would no longer be an issue. This potentially would reduce the parking area on the western side by about 15 feet. The second option would be constructing a retaining wall on the western side of the parking lot. That would help maintain the current size of the parking lot as it is. Additionally, below that, there is some additional district property on the north side of the current fencing. The new fencing will be installed north of that, and then doing some concrete work at the existing fuel pumps. So the additional fee for that scope of work would be $38,000. Does anyone have any questions about any of the new scope of work items or any of the previous work that was already approved?
I don't know if it'd be appropriate for me to just add a little bit more detail about what's going on in the parking lot at the bus garage, but the fence, the current fence, has barbed wire on it, and much of the fence is actually, it's laying on its side. So the fence, one, is problematic. Two, when we dig up the ground and do the work for a storm and all that, the electrical work is going to need to be redone, and that's obviously the best time to do it, when we're digging it all up and laying it down. And then the hillside on the back, where it really needs a retaining wall, if we slope it, we're going to lose about 15 feet, which that's, what that's going to do is cause us to lose probably about 10 bus parking spaces, up to 10. If you move everything up, the parking spaces on the right and left will be gone. So that's, we're trying to gain some additional space. If you look at the one part, we're trying to move the fence back five to 20 feet in certain areas to try to gain a little bit more room in that area, particularly on the far right where the smaller buses are parked. So it's really tight going around the buildings. So I just wanted to say that information that was presented really is an important piece, in case you had any questions about that.
I have a question. The bus garage has been in bad shape for a long time. Considering your feasibility study and the possibility in three years that we'll have other places to put this bus facility or a maintenance facility, is there any recommendation that would be cost-effective as to another location? You don't have to answer this tonight, but another location that might be better suited for our bus garage and/or a maintenance facility? So that's for future, that's just a question. It just seems like that bus garage has been in bad shape for a long time, along with everything, and if we have a better place to put it with this facilities plan, I think we should investigate that.
I will address that. It will take further study. I mean, that obviously is a very good question to have asked. In the bigger picture, where does the bus garage want to be? But that's something we would have to explore with the administration, and where a centralized location makes sense to better serve the district, and whether it's where it is right now or another location.
Yeah, I just don't want to put, you know, good money after bad, if there's a better place to put it, or, you know, it's just a question at this point in time.
I also have, I guess, a question and a comment. Dr. J, you talked about, you know, trying to gather additional spaces. Have we actually laid out, if we made those additional changes, have you laid out the space to be assured that we can accommodate the buses in a feasible, you know?
That's a great question. We have spoke with Hays Design about if we do the sloped, can they lay out the parking to see how that would come out there in the process of doing that for us?
Okay. And I guess my second comment is related to Mrs. Dobos' comment. There's potential down the road for other facilities, but I guess my main question or concern would be zoning issues. You know, I mean, it's in, on industrial, you know, in the industrial park right now, which that's not an issue, but if you go into a neighborhood, that might be an issue. So, I mean, I know you can get that answer pretty quickly, but...
I think the other concern is that you have fuel tanks there.
Yeah, exactly.
So I don't know that you're going to be able to put fuel tanks in.
You're probably not going to be able to do that, but...
You also have garages that are built to maintain the buses. They have lifts and everything over there, so that would be very expensive to relocate.
Any other questions for Hays Group? Thank you very much.
We have one more document, just to go over.
Oh, one more, okay.
And if you need probable costs for the work that we just outlined.
Good.
Okay, now that everyone has that document, so this document really just outlines along the left side going down, it lists all of the different scope of work items, including everything that we just talked about. The three columns on the right sort of outline the progression of this project as the scopes of work, as the scope of work has changed from the summer till now. So you can see that as we've gotten more information and as scope has been added, that the cost has gone up. The column along the right side is the one that we would need to be focusing on right now, the one that's highlighted with the shading, and you can follow that down. So I just wanted to point a couple of things out. You can see in red at the middle of the page, there are a few alternates. At this point, we are considering the retaining wall as an alternate, because we don't yet know if that needs or wants to be included as a part of the project. The second alternate that's listed there is concrete paving between the two buildings. We can include this as an add alternate to the project, and it can be decided if we want to move forward with that, once the project is bid, if it's bid. And that really is just to, because of the amount of buses going in and out of the garage at that location, it's just going to perform a little bit better. You'll have less cracking and maintenance issues to deal with if that product is used. Moving down the column, I did want to point out that for the architectural and engineering fees, should the retaining wall not be pursued, those fees would, a portion of those fees would go away. They would not be needed. That's because to engineer a retaining wall, there needs to be some additional investigative work in the hillside, including geotechnical and surveying, and then also the cost just to design the retaining wall. So should that option not be pursued, the fees for those scopes of work would come out of the cost. Anything to add? Any questions about that portion?
It's kind of shocking that to take care of the original problem of the $750,000 to repave, it's going to cost us over $2 million. But, you know, once you start tearing things apart, you know, that's kind of what we're seeing here, is that it's, to Mrs. Dobos' point, it's been a neglect for a long time, so once you start fixing things, it costs a lot of money.
The good news is, is you're not making any decisions about this tonight.
Right.
Or next week. This is just information. We've been talking about this project and this need, and we now have more accurate information, including a very clear scope of what could be done or might need to be done. This obviously would belong in the facilities master plan that we're still working on.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, would this money come out of our capital fund?
It could come out of your capital fund, yes. It would. It wouldn't qualify under any of the ESRS funds, so...
And it would, would it qualify under any of our applying for bond money or whatever with the...
Certainly, if you were going to, depending on the timing of the project, it could be incorporated into a bond issue, yes.
Okay, like the IMS project?
Yeah, your options would be to include it as part of the IMS project, if you're going to do that, and put it into that bond issue, or you could utilize some of the money sitting in your capital projects fund. Right now, we're trying to, we've made some pretty good progress on the facilities master plan, so we'll wrap it into there, and part of that plan will eventually be how we fund all the projects.
Okay. So you'll take this information and work with it?
Yeah.
Okay. So even though it's a double shocker.
Yeah.
You're working on it. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll take any public comments on agenda items. The phone number is 412-851-6911. Each commenter is required to state name and home address and a description of the comment. The public comments at this time should be reserved for agenda items only. Other comments will take at the end of the meeting. We are limiting, we limit the public comments to two minutes in duration, and we ask that you bear this in mind. We'll wait a few minutes to see if there are any calls coming in.
At this time, there are no calls.
Okay. And you think we should wait a couple minutes? Okay, we'll wait two minutes to see if any calls come in. Okay, any calls, Mr. McCoslin?
There are no calls.
Okay, we're going to move forward then with committee reports. Ms. Ruhl, do you have a report?
We're still looking for a diesel technology teacher for Still Center. Still Center, new programs are doing extremely well, and we're also looking to add a lot of entrepreneur services to bring in revenue to the school. One is like selling baked goods that the students make, also some vet program, screaming programs, and also reopening the salon, the beauty salon services. So we're really looking at a variety of revenue-generating programs, as well as giving the students some experience in the entrepreneurial field, because so many of the trades can go and start their business right away, so we want to give them more experience. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Report from the recreation board, a couple dates. The speaker series, which is virtual through the, you can go to the recreation site to get the information. There's going to be a presentation by a counselor to talk about stress on October 28th. On November 17th, Dr. Tim Campbell will present a talk on longevity. And Wednesday, December 15th, the topic is Aging Well in Your Own Home. Additionally, the farmer's market season is over, and it was very successful. The Turkey Trot, which is the race around, on Thanksgiving, has been finalized, and you can sign up for that again on the website. And Tree Lighting is December 1st at 6:45. Additionally, the Sixth Annual Gingerbread House Display participants must register by November 19th. There also will be a comedy night, live comedy night at the community center on January 29th, 2022. The Rev 'Em Up fundraiser for the recreation program in Bethel Park was very successful this year, even though they had to delay it one day because of weather down at the South Park Skating Rink parking lot, and there are plans already in progress for next year's. Any other committee reports? Okay, at this time then, I would turn the meeting over to Dr. Walsh, who's going to present about our strategic plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobos, and good evening, everybody. We made it. We finally got to tonight where we can share what has been a six-month journey for the board and the district to create the vision and the ideals for the best of Bethel Park in the next five years. I'd like to talk about both the journey and the goals, the ideas, the vision that's been established. You'll recall back in March, the board advertised for volunteers to serve on the Strategic Planning Steering Committee. It was important to this board that the process include a broad range of voices, stakeholders invested in the future of Bethel Park. And to that end, we assembled a team of over 80 people that included board members, administrators, staff members, faculty, community members, parents, business folks, and students. From there, the process went from that large group into six smaller subcommittees. Mr. Pichonary, I'm not up on there yet, so you're scrolling a little bit faster. Those six smaller subcommittees then spent the bulk of the summer working together in small groups to conduct a very thorough analysis, which we called our internal and our external scan. That journey, where you spent the time looking back over our history, over our data, our measurement systems, and other tools that we use to benchmark ourselves, we also spend time looking around, looking outside the walls of Bethel Park, so to speak, at what's happening in education in our area, across the Commonwealth, and even across the country, which then led us to looking forward, is to what from this information and these ideas can we create the future for Bethel Park? What will our vision be based on all of this evidence, data, and ideas? The subcommittees then presented, at the end of August, their findings to the larger group again for some discussion and consideration, very much a stakeholder-driven process. And that theme continued into September, when we took the ideas from each of the subcommittees and sent them to other stakeholders in the district, parents and students, and asked for them to help us prioritize these goals. So tonight, I will share with you those goals that have been identified by the six subcommittees that will carry us forward for the next five years. I'd like to pause just long enough to acknowledge that that was a significant journey, a lot of work, a lot of critical thinking, creative thinking, great discussions, and camaraderie in the process. So I'm sure the board would join me in acknowledging and appreciating the contributions of those committee members who served with us in those last six months to get to where we are tonight. Most pleased to share their work with you, very proud of their discussions and their ideas. So your vision back in March to have a stakeholder-driven process is very much in fruition here tonight. It's also worth noting that we're obligated by the Department of Education in Pennsylvania to produce every three years a comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan focuses almost exclusively on the educational aspects of the operation, from educational programs... almost exclusively on the educational aspects of the operation, from educational programs and curriculum to special education and gifted services to faculty professional development, et cetera. And so in compendium to the strategic plan, we also produced our comprehensive plan to submit to the state, and they're very much sister plans. Uh, the ideas from the steering committees populated the comprehensive plan beyond within the, um, the requirements from Pennsylvania Department of Education. We'll move on. Uh, so I, I talked about some of the milestones, I skipped a, a few key pieces. One of the things that happened after the Strategic Planning Steering Committee submitted their findings to the, to the larger group, the administration spent a lot of time going through each of their proposals and their action steps, conducting our own SWOT analysis, looking at the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats that these goals could provide or could address in the process. It helped us to refine the goals, and that community survey helped us to prioritize the goals. So as I share with them tonight, you know that you're getting them in the order in which the community has spoken. These are the ones that they find to be most important first, down to the, the lesser important goals in the order in which they're presented. We'll move on. The first subcommittee I'll share with you is the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee. This group identified five goals. I'll note that the strategic plan has individual action steps or possible actions to achieve these goals. I won't go through those tonight, uh, that's quite detailed. Uh, the board has printed copies of the strategic plan for your reference, and it's important to note that there are online digital versions of the plans available on our website, and they're also available in printed form in the Bethel Park Municipal Library and in the District Administration Office Lobby. So if folks don't have that access digitally, they can visit those, one of those locations to see the printed copies and see all the granular detail that will drive these goals. So the CNI group put together five, first two goals. The first is to clearly align and articulate a relevant 21st century curriculum. The second is to ensure that the implementation of the curriculum, all of our intervention systems and programs, and all of our instructional practices are consistently implemented, high-quality implementation across all classrooms. In other words, the experience in third grade, doesn't matter what building you're in, it's going to be the same high-quality experience. The third goal speaks to the needs of our special education population of students, and that we, we aim to have their performance, their achievement be commensurate with our benchmark schools, knowing what's capable, what's possible for these students in terms of achievement. Goal number four is to, is to improve our performance, our student performance on all those state and national assessment measures. This would include your AP test scores, your SATs, ACTs, and the, the state's PSSA and Keystone exams. And again, there's individual action steps that have been identified, uh, to show that growth and that achievement over the next five years. And the fifth goal from the CNI committee is to develop and implement a best-in-class STEAM program. We know from research, uh, and from evidence surrounding us, that when we integrate these disciplines, good things happen educationally for students. Uh, the retention, their engagement, all of that increases. And so we shall be working over the next five years to ensure STEAM experiences for students at every grade, multiple STEAM experiences for every student at every grade. The second subcommittee, the Student Experience Subcommittee, identified three goals. The first, uh, that was prioritized by the community was to ensure that the learning outcomes are the same, that we have the same type of program experience and opportunity for students through the principles and practices of universal design for learning. Uh, that's worth Googling for those that aren't familiar with the term. Uh, but we have specific actions in place to ensure that this, that what the students need to achieve is provided to them. The second goal from the Student Experience Committee was a large overarching safety goal, speaking to school and student safety. There were sort of subpieces to this goal. Uh, part one of it is to ensure that we have a proactive approach to school safety with counselors or social workers in every building. The second is to ensure that we have the Student Assistance Program available in all of our schools, uh, therefore serving more students in need through the SAP process. The third sub-goal here was to address more proactive and pro-social forms of classroom management and student discipline to try and reduce the numbers of in and out-of-school suspensions. And the fourth is to ensure that all of our measures and all of our programs, uh, will address any discrepancy in those outcomes that students of color or students with disabilities are currently experiencing. The third goal from the Student Experience Group speaks to engagement, and this committee seeks to improve the students' connectedness, their sense of respect and value during their time in Bethel Park through the programs we offer, to ensure the supports that we have available, and their level of pride in the school is addressed there, too. The third subcommittee, Budget and Finance, developed two goals. The first is to develop a, a system, a dashboard, we'll call it a metric, to assess the return on investment, that the dollars, the community investment, the tax dollars that are, that are collected here are well-used as measured by a, a soon-to-be-developed metrics dashboard. The second goal they've established is to develop a long-range budget plan that looks down the road, uh, at the potential costs, the depend, the potential opportunities, uh, and financial needs the district will have over the five- or ten-year period, uh, looking into the future. This will be a, a very important piece for the district, considering that facilities themselves have, um, issues that need to be addressed over that same time period. The Human Resources Subcommittee developed three goals. The first is to conduct a thorough staffing analysis to ensure that we have equity in our staffs, and that we maximize the staff that we currently have, to be sure that all of the systems and programs and opportunities are, are accounted for by our staff and maximized by the employees that we have. Goal number two speaks to developing a wellness program for our faculty and staff and support people. And goal number three addresses the need to improve the professional development opportunities that we provide our staff, uh, to help them polish their own diamonds and be their best version of themselves as educators. The fourth subcommittee, I've lost track, is that four or five? Uh, the next subcommittee is the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. This group identified, uh, four, three goals. The first one is to ensure that all of our students, all students will achieve equity and feelings of connectedness, respect, and value through our policies, through our budget, and through staffing and our programs. That, in other words, it speaks to how the administration will, uh, be stewards of the schools and of the programs, so that everybody has equal and equitable access. Goal number two speaks to the marginalized population of students who are currently feeling, uh, disconnected from their school experience in various ways, and our goal here would be to increase those students' connectedness, respect, and value, so that in the future they would feel more closely aligned with Bethel Park and feeling that same pride. And the third goal speaks, much like the other two, uh, subcommittees, speaks to the professional development, to ensure that we are providing appropriate and necessary professional development to our faculty, so that they can provide the best possible experience for all students in their classroom, regardless of ability, uh, or gender or race. The Facilities and Infrastructure Group did not necessarily identify a goal. Uh, they really worked on putting, pointing us towards a facilities master plan, and how we need to, how we would address the buildings and the other infrastructure pieces of our school district, uh, over the next five to ten years. Using what was a Hays feasibility study that the board had commissioned, uh, they were able then to identify the operational things, the infrastructure, mechanical systems, uh, procedure, and, uh, operational procedures that the district should consider in a new facilities master plan, that would, much like our budget, lay out the work that's to be done over the next five or ten years, to bring up all of our facilities to 21st century best-in-class facilities. Some of the things that came in from that, that group's discussions would be to consider including in that facilities master plan, uh, top priority was to make sure that there's equity in our facilities. What we offer in one building should be available in all the buildings. That the bus garage should be addressed, there's concerns about this infrastructure and safety there at the bus garage. Uh, and then some enhancements, things like restrooms and concessions around the upper fields of the high school, the administrative office renovation, some address, address safety and, and accessibility issues at the stadium, including that access road behind the stadium, and even look down the road at possible, uh, turfing the softball and baseball fields. So that was seventeen different goals, coming from six subcommittees, based on their analysis of data and history, and benchmarking our competitors, and looking into the future of education. What comes next? We'll leave this plan available and open for community feedback, and at the same time, we'll be working internally on developing systems to measure ourselves with these goals. We want to track the progress we make in order, over the next five years, to achieve all seventeen of these goals. Uh, we want to make sure that that's a public-facing document, that folks at home can track our progress with these goals, to see the changes we're implementing, and what impact it's having on achievement and students' connectedness, respect, and value. And of course, we would plan to make an annual report to the school board each year with an update on our progress with these plans, what work has been accomplished, and what work remains to be done. To do that, we will also assign each goal to various administrators and staff members to be responsible for the tracking of and the attention to the action plans in the goals, and that they'll help contribute to this measurement system that we just referenced. I talked about feedback. Uh, we have opened these documents now for, for public view, they've been online, uh, since the weekend, uh, and they've also been available in the municipal library and in the lobby here since last Friday. Uh, so folks will be able to take a close look at them and provide feedback. There is a link from our website to a Google survey, where you can provide written feedback to the board, uh, and identify issues or concerns or commendations, perhaps, uh, that should be included in the plan before that date in November, when the board convenes to accept this plan and institutionalize it for the next five years. So in closing, I want to circle back to where I opened and said, it's really with tremendous amount of pride and gratitude, uh, in the committee for the work that they did, uh, and members here of the board included, and the administrators that are on the webex tonight, as well as others, uh, that should be commended for that hard work, that heavy lifting and deep thinking that, that brought us to those ideas there. Uh, the, the real granular stuff, those action steps, really tell the story of how this plan's going to be completed. While the goals lay out that vision, that broad and ambitious attention we're going to pay, you get into the action plan, the initial action steps, to see some of the granular work that will transpire to get us to this, to those ends five years from now. So with that, thanks, uh, and with that acknowledgement of the, the real power to achieve begins now, we lock arms together as a, as a board, as an administration, and as a staff, to achieve these goals, I look forward to those, those journeys together. Were there questions from the board, or any comments that you'd like to make?
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Could you also advertise about the two meetings next week?
Sure, thank you.
Or talk about them?
Right, so I mentioned the facilities master plan, and in the process of talking about that, I referenced this Hays feasibility study. Uh, it was, uh, just about a year ago, in November of 2020, when the board contracted with the Hays Design Group to conduct a feasibility study. Uh, they worked through that to a better part of the winter and into the spring, when , uh, variations of the, and drafts of that feasibility study began to come forward to the board, uh, ultimately by, um, late April, when the final report was presented. Uh, the board then handed that over to the feasibility, to the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, and said, "Take a look at this in your, in your analysis of data and information, and see what, what opportunities are in here for each of those subcommittees to consider." Uh, and in particular, the, the, um, Facilities and Infrastructure Committee spent quite a bit of time with that. And so what I'd like to do next week, uh, what we are planning to do next week, on Monday and Wednesday, is to present that feasibility study to our community. We have a session scheduled for next Monday evening at the Bethel Park Rec Center, uh, six thirty, where we'll present this information, share the findings and the, um, issues that need to be addressed, and we'll do it again next Wednesday evening at six thirty, this time we'll do it on the same Zoom show that, uh, folks are watching right now. Uh, and will be a repeat of the, of the Monday presentation for those that aren't able to come out or can't make the Monday night performance. And then, uh, we'll archive that presentation on our website, so a few folks could see it in the future, uh, to make reference to the feasibility study. This all is leading to a point at which the board should make some commitments about how this master plan will be, um, completed over the next five to ten years, making some decisions. It's clear to, it'll be clear to everybody that, that watches these presentations, that something has to be done with the facilities, uh, that there is much work that needs to be done in order to maintain our facilities, or upgrade, uh, enhance, uh, the facilities, or look at other options. Uh, so some decisions have to be made here in order to keep going forward. Uh, so the first step, I think, would be to share these with the community and get some feedback about which options they, they like the best, uh, and then the board can take that up in November and take it from that point forward.
Questions for Dr. Walsh?
I do want to point out, and again, just to make sure I was, I said this clearly at the beginning, but, uh, there's two plans currently on display. The, the bigger one, the heftier one, is the, is the strategic plan, and that comes from those six subcommittees. Pennsylvania Department of Education requires a comprehensive plan, and that's, that information was drawn from the strategic plan to complete that requirement that the state has. So the goals in the comprehensive plan are the ones that came from the, the community, or pardon me, from the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee and the Student Experience Subcommittee. Uh, both of them are on tonight's agenda for consideration, and approving them next week means that we can then move forward to gather feedback. Of course, they're already out there, they're already out for public comment and feedback, but, uh, you'll just make that formal next week with your motion. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scalzo, um, will you take the next items in your committee?
Yes. Uh, number two, uh, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to present the Bethel Park School District strategic plan and display the plan at the Administration Building and the Bethel Park Public Library for thirty days. Number three, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to present Bethel Park School District comprehensive plan and display the plan at the Administration Building and the public, or, and the Bethel Park Public Library for thirty days, as required by Pennsylvania Department of Education. Number four, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit Mandy Figliolli to attend the Standards-Aligned System Institute Focusing Forward, Creating Innovative Educational Pathways Conference, where she will be a presenter in Hershey, PA, from December sixth through the eighth, 2021, at no cost to the district. And number five, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit students who are seniors and student, who is a junior in the 2021-2022 school year, to participate in independent studies in big data and data analytics under the direction of Bethel Park High School marketing teacher, Emily- of Bethel Park High School marketing teacher Emily Smoller and Bethel Park High School science teacher Lee Cristofano. Students will earn a half credit during the first semester of the 2021-2022 school year.
Are there any questions or concerns about any of these items?
So I have one question on the comprehensive plan. So, you know, I, I saw how it was kind of translated into the form that's used by the state. But whether we use that as our guide or the other strategic plan we've been working off through our committees, we should identify action items, you know, who's the, you know, responsible person for updating the board on each of those items, and then build it into our calendar for next year so that, you know, every committee meeting, there's an update on one of these goals for a strategic plan. Otherwise, I can count on no fingers how many times we reviewed the last strategic plan, okay? And it'll end up like that also. So I think we should, we should, you know, build that into our board calendar for next year.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just respond if you don't mind, Mrs. Dobis.
Please.
You made two good points here. The first is that the comprehensive plan is, is a tool, an online tool that we have to populate in the state and state's form. And you put something in box one and it shows up in box eight and then box 20 and box 40. It kind of replicates itself. So it becomes a very wonky, incoherent system when you read the printed version of it.
It's terrible. It's, you can't really, it's not a plan. It's just a form.
And it's, and so I want to emphasize that, that it is the strategic plan that we intend to follow.
Sure.
A comprehensive plan is a requirement. We have completed that requirement.
Yeah.
And there's really nothing in it that didn't already get considered in the strategic plan. It just doesn't look, it just looks a little bit cumbersome and wonky, and I, that's my technical term for it.
Yeah, no, it is.
Trying, trying to follow the logic of the plan, really, it makes more sense to read the strategic plan.
Perfect.
Your second point is, yes, there are two key pieces, three, really, three pieces that have to happen now. Number one is that, once the plan's approved, we got to develop that scorecard. How will we measure ourselves with these goals? Number two is, who owns those goals? We're going to assign them process team holders, who's going to be responsible for tracking that and reporting it. And to your suggestion, then, that means item three is, how often are we going to report this progress to the board? We could certainly do one bucket per month for, you know, every six months, you get a new buckets report on how those goals are coming forward. That makes sense to me.
Right.
And so I like that idea, and we'll have the, you know, the administrator that owns that goal be the one that speaks to it for you.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments about it? Okay, of those four items, because the first was just a presentation, is there any item that you want to hold out, or can they all four go into the consent agenda for next week? Consent agenda for all, all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McGregor?
Okay, under Personnel Committee, there are nine items. One, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Number two, acceptance of resignation. Number three, appointment of personnel. Number four, approval of unpaid leave of absence professional. Number five, approval of unpaid leave of absence classified. Number six, approval of job description. Number seven, approval of staffing changes. Number eight, approval of the revised agreement for school police officers, school security officer employees. And number nine, approval of schoolagi champions.
Thank you. So in terms of questions for any one of those, I was wondering if someone could go over six, seven, and eight for us to clarify what we're doing with these three? Because they are connected.
Correct. So the job description we developed, and Amy and I went and reviewed it, was campus manager. The, the process of the campus manager job description was put together for somebody to be at the elementary centers. They would be another level of eyes and ears for the district. So we went through the job description and created one for campus managers to be at the elementary level, and that's why you'll have number seven, approving the staffing changes, which would create the position of campus managers. And number eight is the agreement where we decided to put campus managers as part of that agreement. So you will see that they are now part of that agreement. However, while we had the time to revise the agreement, we made two other changes to the agreement. Coming up shortly, starting next week, you will see as a first reading for policy, new sick leave. Allegheny County passed new legislation that all employees get sick leave, not just full-time employees. So we made that change in this agreement for part-time security to get sick leave. And then the third piece of this agreement to change was to, when we first developed this, it was single benefits, but to help recruit and fill these positions, we're going to go back to what we used to do with police officers and security officers and offer full benefits with these positions.
So can you explain then, who's, so we'll have a campus manager at each one of the five elementary schools?
Well, four out of the five, because we'll still have one police officer at one of the five.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we'll have campus managers at four. Because the police officer, we have three police officers, one stationed at each level. So we have one at the high school level, one at the middle school level, and one at the elementary level.
Okay. And then where do the security officers fit in?
So the security officers will stay at the secondary level.
Okay.
They will be with high school and middle school levels.
So where is the police officer at the middle school level compared to, I know there's an officer at the high school. So where is the police officer stationed for middle school?
Yeah, right now, it's at NAMs. The person is at NAMs.
Okay, so there's no full-time police officer at IMS?
As of right now, no. What's that?
There's no police officer at IMS?
There's a security officer at IMS.
Yeah, there's a full-time security officer. It's the security, head of security at IMS.
Okay. Yeah, I, I get that. I, there's, there's a concern, because we're also pulling an SPO, because it's needed to pull that SPO from 9:00 to 9:30 and 3:00, whatever, to direct, I mean, it's totally needed, trust me. But then we're leaving this whole campus without a police officer. So neither of those buildings has a police officer for a short, for a period of time every morning.
Okay.
So did you, I wasn't aware, but you might want to speak upon this then?
Well, we, we do have an officer at IMS and an officer at NAMs currently until we fill the positions with the campus manager, because we could not get, get, we can only get one elementary covered. So we, we, with the recommendation of our SRO, we moved the officer up to IMS. They do help with the traffic, though, and then they go back to their stations, their schools.
So right now, with the three SPOs, we only have two marked units. All right? And then the one at NAMs uses his own vehicle, but...
Right, that's correct.
The other two are expected with the marked units, they're to do traffic assignments.
They do.
Go from school to school if needed, right?
Yeah. We do, we do one, we do traffic also at NAMs, but there's no marked car there. There's no car. All three have, they do traffic. They have the cars. They put the lights on and all that.
That's something, if, if possible, I don't know with the borough situation and...
We'd like to have a third car if it's possible.
If between, yeah, see if they have another third car available. That way, all three will have marked units.
That's what we're looking for, yes.
Thank you.
And so I just want to make sure there's somebody at every building?
Correct. That is the goal, to have somebody at every single building.
Currently, that's not the case, because we could not, we could not fill all those security positions. That's why we're asking to move to a campus manager, so we can get a person in each of the elementaries.
Okay.
That's why we're making the change.
All right, so that's what we're, we're...
Yes, that's, that's the recommendation.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Piscinari, you said regards to the county regulations on sick hours for part-time. Is there a formula they're working out based on the hours?
Correct, yeah. It's one hour for every 35 hours they work.
Okay.
Okay, are there any further questions under the Personnel Committee? Is there any item that anyone would like to hold out, or can they all go on the consent agenda?
I need number nine held out because of a conflict of interest.
Any others? Okay, one through eight can go on the consent agenda, and nine will need to go on the regular agenda. It's probably done. Okay, Mr. Christiansen, finance?
So in finance, there'll be six items on the agenda for next week. One through three are the standard monthly salaries, bills, financial report, and budget transfers. We have the approval of a workers' compensation agreement and a transportation agreement with Baldwin Whitehall School District, and a, the, the discussion of a motion to develop and advertise a request for proposals for construction manager services. So I take it that is not going to be voted on?
No, we wanted to have tonight be this discussion.
Okay.
Depending on how it goes, to turn it into a motion next week.
I see, okay.
So we're talking, discuss the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so before we do that discussion, I just wanted to check, is number four our, like, our annual approval of something?
No, this is, this is an organization, a company I've used at other school districts that come in and review your prior workers, workers' compensation claims that you've paid out. And they can generate savings by finding discrepancies in those claims and the dollars that were paid out. And basically, we share those savings 50/50. So it's returned to the district. There's no cost or obligation to the district beyond that. So I've used him at prior school districts, and he's been very successful. He's done a preliminary review of our claims, is pretty, 99% sure he can find some money for the district.
Okay, thank you. So for items one through five, is there any item that anyone would like to have held out? Okay, then one through five can go on the consent agenda. And then I guess someone's going to talk to us about number six.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I will address number six, if you will. I've passed out some information about the construction manager considerations. There's basically three options that the board could consider. Option A would be internal oversight. And let me back up just a little bit. Tonight, we're asking for an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. That's all we're asking for. We're not asking for any decisions as far as who, who or what the firm would be. So option A is internal oversight, which could be Mr. Fierst and myself. And that are, you could see the pros and cons of option A. I won't read those to you. Option B is kind of a middle approach, which is a clerk of the works. That's an individual who's, has qualifications to be the construction manager from that perspective. You can also see the pros and cons. You can see that. And option C, which is the administration's recommendation, if we do any construction, is to have a construction manager firm. For example, when we did the high school, we had a construction manager firm that was in oversight of that operation and that building. So you can see with the pros and cons with the construction manager firm, we believe it will, actually, it's a little more expensive, but in the long run, it can, I know it sounds crazy, but it can save you money as opposed to any mistakes that would be incurred with the other two options.
Is option C that the energy savings project?
So that, if...
Go ahead.
Yeah, so if the, if the work that the board wants to do at IMS or any other building were to be renovation, then the board could consider them an energy savings project, which would require a construction manager, a particular kind of construction manager to shepherd that through from design all the way to construction and completion. What, what brought us here tonight was the fact that we're getting, you know, we've been working, as the board knows from previous meetings, been working on a renovation of IMS at some point in the near future. As the plans get a little more granular and the budgeting gets a little more specific, we should have a, have one of these options in place to help review that, refine it, and to give the board advice on, on cost savings or a good, better, best selections, et cetera. So we're, we're coming tonight with a recommendation, first to share the, share the options, but recommend option C, particularly if, if we want to move towards the energy savings project sometime between now and the, the final schematic design.
So this recommendation is for the full, for the full, you know, facilities plan that we're going to be adopting, so upwards of $70 million, right?
Yeah, so we could use the same firm. This one, right now, we were thinking, just focused on the NAMs or the IMS project.
Okay.
But...
It's still $30 million.
With a good experience, good relationship with, of the selected firm.
Yeah.
Could also carry us through any other work that, that the board chooses to do with, as a part of the entire master plan.
Right.
So what, what we're asking once again is just for the RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. Put that out there, advertise, and see, you know, what we get. We would bring those options to the board in the future to make a decision about who would be hired if, if they were to be hired.
Yeah. I, I support your recommendation. I think it's a good recommendation. The, you know, we saw with the bus garage where the cost doubled. Now, it's a little bit different scenario, but when you're dealing with $30 million, it doesn't take much to have to tack on another $2 million, you know, and, you know, change fees and things like that. So we got to make sure that we manage those costs before we incur additional costs, not after.
Yes. For sure. They would take the, like, if, if the board allows us to move forward and you get someone identified for the November meeting, they would then take over the planning and look at the choices that the architect's making, the process, the phasing, all of that.
Right.
To ensure it's, it's in the district's best interest, and both the selection of materials, the timing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they become our eyes and ears from that point forward.
Yeah, and, and change orders could become, I think we mentioned earlier, can become sources of profit for some contractors.
Correct.
We got to make sure that...
Right. They would, they would value engineer the entire project to hopefully mitigate that.
So when this board sat in, we were giving the information about some issues at the high school. Would this construction manager firm have some responsibility, liability for something that went wrong? I mean, is that...
So let's, so to, to be clear, that the high school project wasn't something that was missed in the emotional construction. It was something that failed over the 10-year life of the project. But leap ahead and say we do some work at, at IMS and something is missed.
Yes.
Then, then your construction manager, your contractor, your architect, everybody would have to answer to that oversight.
This gives us another layer of assurance that the project's going to be done and run, and we're not looking at additional funds down the road, because the other high school had multiple issues going from the hillside and so forth.
Not, it's not a foolproof guarantee, but when it does put somebody on that site every day that work is being done, to look over the shoulder of the contractors and the foreman, to be sure that it's exactly what was drawn, and if it was drawn incorrectly, to make those corrections to be our eyes and ears.
Yes, thank you.
Another important part, too, is the timeline. The person on site keeps, keeps everybody on the timeline, which is very important, as you know, related to costs.
And the person on site, just for clarity for everyone, is not associated with the contractor or the subcontractors.
It's an independent, independent firm.
Totally independent person.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted clarification.
Yes.
And just wanted to comment, Dr. J, I guess you're going to make sure that yourself and Nick would be involved
Yes.
with this person as part of his process.
Both myself and Mr. Fierst will be very highly involved, yes.
I, I know that. I just wanted you to, I wanted to hear you say that loud so everybody else heard it.
Hey, you built a great...
Hey, you built a great high school, so...
Yeah, well, thank you, we were, we had a great team that did that, yeah.
Yeah, and I think with that, that third-party independent, it really saved us, believe it or not, even with some of the issues we had with the high school. I mean, there were times where they came in and made different recommendations, saved us for a lot of change orders, and the fact that they reported back to us all the time from their meetings, I mean, it was really good to have somebody else's perspective in your interests and mine.
Especially during construction meetings, when, you know, sometime it gets a little bit above your pay grade, and you're sitting there, you need someone that has that experience and knowledge to understand the language and the lingo, so that we're not being misled.
There are, they are our advocate to move that construction along, so their, their best interest is our best interest to move it along.
Yeah.
In fact, something as simple as we were to have a larger rifle range and almost lost the whole rifle range, but it was brought to our attention that it was being eliminated, and we saved it. So, just because we had another set of eyes on the project.
Right, yes.
So, it sounds to me like for next week, you can put option C for the RFQ on the agenda. And I think we should not put that on the consent agenda, I think we should vote on that separately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Turner?
You have approval of policies, second priority, or two, four, or one, second credit, revision of policies, six, per few, six, one, three, public participation, or maybe twenty, for identity, medical, doctor, who did make that change?
Uh...
...on topics.
Yes. All of a sudden, my mind just went blank. I know I talked about it with...
My computer is so good.
Yes.
It is to make sure that everybody understands this during public comments, they don't want to be blunt.
Yes, yeah, thank you, yes, thank you, that's exactly, that correction. So, these, these are all revised policies with some updates recommended by PSBA, and we took it a step further and further clarified that public comment period, so that everybody's allowed two minutes, but you, you don't get to get back in the line again for another two minutes, even if you change topics, it's two minutes.
But you could speak at the beginning and at the end.
Correct.
Correct. But it just, we want...
And I see that it's, that in that particular policy, we're still requesting people to register with the board secretary one day in advance of the meeting to speak at the meeting, but we will also take comments at that meeting.
We will take comments at the meeting with them signing in and giving their name and addresses a resident of the municipality.
Correct.
Right. So, the board secretary would be you, and they would have to register with Mr. McCoslin after this with their name, address, and then their intent.
This probably won't be effective till the December meeting. This is only the second reading.
Yeah.
Next week would be the third reading.
And then, you approve it after that.
Oh.
Yeah, so, Mrs. Dobus, that, Mrs. Greg's going to use a Google form for folks to register, or they don't have to make a call, Mr. McCoslin or Mrs. Greg, it would be an online form similar to where the, right around the place that the board agendas are housed, to click and register to be a speaker at the meeting.
Okay, so that will be easy, because we've done that in the past.
Correct.
Before also. And then, did you say the booster one, too? Did you say that yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
And then, the revisions to the policy, the first of three readings for the booster Dr. Walsh, I know that you had played a role in this part, this, there were some clarifications needed on certain things to come, to be more, more in line with other districts in the area.
Correct, it actually, this basically gives guidance to our boosters on how they would, the accountability for their funds if they're giving honoraria or gifts to staff members, certain requirements and tax code that they would have to fill out, ten-ninety-nine forms, for instance, if they were doing that. So, it, it tightens up the language and clarifies, it also meets the booster's request to be able to do that for their coaches.
And Mr. McCoslin, you would provide them guidance on the ten-ninety-nine if required, correct?
Yeah, there's an online form, and individuals or organizations can issue ten-ninety-nines, but yeah, it's not difficult.
Even a nifty YouTube video on how to do it, too.
Yeah, I know that, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're covering all our bases if people had questions.
Yes.
For, for me, I'm delighted about this particular change of policy, because the other one was so sticky and it was difficult. We had multiple booster organization meetings as a result of it, and to have this guideline, the IRS guideline and the ten-ninety-nine form is, makes everything so much simpler in my, in my view, anyway.
I agree, and I think most booster organizations will welcome the positive change compared to, you know, four years ago when it went backwards.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, thank you. Any other questions or comments about any of the policies? Okay, so we will revisit them again next week. At this time, Mr. McCoslin, are there any public comments?
There are no comments.
Okay, are there any board comments?
Yes. I just want to thank Dr. Walsh and his team for spearheading the strategic plan. It's, it's a lot of work in, in six months, and it just shows his commitment to Bethel Park. He hasn't been here for a year, and, you know, we're all going to be voting on a strategic plan here shortly, and I'm, I'm just extremely excited, and I'm very thankful for the entire administrative team and the commitment by all. So, thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, I want to echo that, you know, I've been on the board six years now, and I feel like we can finally think about one, two, three years down the road, and not just the next one or two meetings down the road. So, I think, you know, this framework is coming together. I think it'll help the board act like a board and not like pseudo-administrators who are thinking about running the school, because that's not our job to run the school, but it's to help you think about the future of the school. And I think that's fantastic. You've, you know, your involvement in this process previously has really accelerated. I never dreamed we'd get this far this fast, but thank you for leading us through this.
And as a, as somebody who has sat on the comprehensive plan before, this time around, as Barry said, I think it's starting to be concrete if we use parts of the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan as a, as a check process and reports, I think we're on the way to being best in classes, you would say. We're getting, we have started that process, so thank you to everyone.
Let me just point out, because I didn't say this before, but I need to say it now, that it is a five-year plan, and it's going to take every bit of five years, because there's seventeen goals, seventeen things we have, and they're very broad, very aggressive, forward-thinking goals that are going to take time, and I mentioned this again, it's going to take all of us moving towards that together to achieve these, it's going to, it's going to move mountains.
And the other person I think we need to thank, besides the administration, and even us all sitting here, there were, every one of us on the school board sat on these committees and put in time this summer for that, is Mr. Amrin. He put in a significant amount of time as the co-chair, and, you know, it might be past his bedtime tonight, but...
It is, it is.
It is. But he, we, as a board and others, we owe him a large thank you for all of his help in this process and really making this a community effort. So, thank you, Andy.
I know, and having reviewing several of the other districts' long strategic plans, I often wondered why ours was like maybe four or five pages, and they would hand me this large stack, very well detailed, and I think we're well on our way to meeting the same kinds of, you know, strategic plan. I think we've done a good job.
I concur with all those statements. This is a dream that is being realized, and five years is fine. I mean, I, I understand, I understand, because I've been on the board for eight years, and this just, this, this is just like a dream come true, and so, I'm very grateful for your leadership, for Mr. Andy Amrin being involved, and for everybody who did all the hard work on the committees. I think we should be proud of what we, what we, what we all collectively created here, and I look forward to watching it in the future for the next five years.
Mrs. Dobus, what I, what I really think is they should invite us back at the five-year reunion, so that we can celebrate the, the end of the strategic plan and the beginning of the next one.
Well, it'd be the beginning of the next, right?
Mr. McCoslin, are there, did there happen to be any more public comments?
There are no comments.
No comments, okay, any other comments?
I have another subject change in it, but a shout-out. A couple Fridays ago, Bethel Park hosted West Allegheny in a football game, it was the WPA Gold Star Game, and a group of us got to attend, and I'll say one thing, Mr. Sloan, Mr. Crombie, Mr. Fierst, and everybody, and obviously, the football team did it, it was a great presentation. I don't know if you got to see it or see it on TV, some, we were there, but it was very moving, it was a very nice presentation, and give kudos to everybody who helped put that together, because that was a very, I was very proud of what our, our staff had put together, and of course, we come up with a W that night, but it was a very good night for us, and everything turned out so well. So, but kudos to all those people involved, made that a very good special night for everybody.
And I think we need to recognize our football players that did take time out of theirs to recognize all those parents and spend time with those parents of those fallen soldiers. That was, and West Allegheny football players did the same thing, it was a really moving situation.
Especially, the last family was a Bethel Park family.
Park family, yeah.
And that was very moving to see them all come out back to Bethel Park and support us and to share with their son who played football at Bethel Park also.
Mrs. Dobus, I do have two comments. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Walsh, she attended the Upper St. Clair-Bethel Park Breakfast Rotary Meeting today and represented our district quite well. It's sort of an annual event where we invite superintendents and chief of police, et cetera, from both communities to speak to the Rotary, and thank you very much, Doc, for that, it was a really well-received presentation. And second, I'd like to thank the district and Joe Consolmagnon and his staff that helped that same Rotary have their major fundraiser at the high school last weekend, which we will, all that money's going to be given back to the community nonprofits later, you know, it's a process. But some new people got exposed to the, to the facilities and were just amazed by our facilities. The Interact Club, which is part of the Rotary, the two Rotaries here, two of the three Rotaries in Bethel Park, did an outstanding job of volunteering, and some scouts and some girl scouts, and everyone involved, and it was just a tremendous success. So, thank you to all the sponsors, the community, the school district, and everyone involved.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have one comment, it just seems like everything we undertake is, is a pretty big and, and important job, and Dr. Walsh and Dr. Jen Santi, everyone involved in this room, you guys have done a great job, so I'm proud to be Bethel Parkian.
Mrs. Dobus, I'd like to make one comment here about, just want to let you know that there will be a veterans' free lunch on November, the, I think, excuse me, I have a blank here, fifth, on the Friday, the first Friday in November, there'll be free lunches for all the veterans at the community center. If you just pass the word on, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. So, moved?
Second.
Moved to second?
Right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, this meeting is over.